I'm going to call this special meeting of Rockport Select Board to order for Thursday, March 24th, here at the Opera House, and we are being livestreamed at livestream.com/rockportmaine, all spelled out. The purpose of the meeting tonight is to receive the report from the Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee, and we have the Chair of that committee, Mr. Jan Rosenbaum, to make his comments. And if you would, please.
I gave everybody the night off since they had done so much work.
Oh, so we get to leave?
Which is why I'm the only...not you, no, the committee.
Oh, sorry.
And you unfortunately have call over Tracy's attendance, so. I have a report, I'm going to read a page or so, I'll give it to Linda for the official record, and then I'd be happy to take any questions that you have. "The Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee recommends that the Select Board engage Reed &amp; Company Architecture of Portland to design and construct a library and adjacent park using the existing library site at One Lime Rock Street and the adjacent memorial park. Our decision is based on the consideration of many factors after first reviewing RFQ submissions, that is, requests for qualification submissions, from 11 architectural firms, and then selecting six firms and giving them a month to prepare their presentations of conceptual designs, site designs, and building placement possibilities. The criteria we use to choose a firm only peripherally involved what a building might look like, but rather concentrated on things like library and public building design experience, thoughtful inclusive approach, sensitivity to the site and surrounding community, ease of communication, imagination, overall ability in designing and construction management, quality of consultants and in-house personnel. Each of us use his or her own judgment. I think we had minimal conversation with one another during the week we took to think and then rank the firms. Two firms split all the first place votes, with Reed getting 75 percent on the first ballot. Those committee members who did not rank Reed first ranked them second, and we're comfortable with the group's decision. So while not actually unanimous, I consider our decision to be one of consensus. All parts of the process have been open to the public, most have been archived. The six presentations remain available to view at www.livestream.com/rockportmaine," all one word.
Rockport M-A-I-N-E.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Well, obviously you would be sure. Rockport M-A-I-N-E. I encourage all residents to view the six presentations. We would like to thank John Schultz for his endless knowledge and measured advice, his constant availability, and good humor. I personally recommend to the Board and the Library Committee that the role of the AHLPC be reexamined now to be certain we all agree on how to move forward. Our assumption is that we will work with Reed &amp; Company to develop a firm concept, design, and cost estimates before the Select Board has to write a warrant article for the November ballot. At that time, a new building committee should be started and authorized to continue through the final move-in date, including coordination with the fundraising committee. However, the Board may instead opt to choose a building committee immediately. How to proceed is up to the two elected Boards. The AHLPC has learned a great many things during our work and will continue even more, continue to learn even more in the coming few months. I know that there are many people on the committee who would like to continue with the library design-build process. Please consider us when you decide whatever you decide." Are there any questions?
I will open this to questions.
Don't look at me.
I know.
Yeah, I looked at you.
You were wrong one day asking.
It's easier looking this way than that. Owen? Wow, look at that haircut.
Right? There's a story that goes with it.
I'm sure. Yeah, your question.
I'm not going to lie, I've been overwhelmed with other town things. Was not able to give the livestream the needed kind of viewership. Can you just kind of encapsulate? I got a little bit of a feel about what impressed you all about Reed &amp; Company. Can you give me just the brief overview of the high points?
Of course. The highest of the high points, I think, has to go to their previous experience. They've designed new or renovated about 30 libraries in the state of Maine. They are by far the most experienced. When we talked to them, when we read their submissions, when we listened to their presentation, it was clear, as our library director, Ben Blackman, said, "They speak library. They understand the workflow that they had set out." Regardless of what the building envelope is, was shown to be, or will be, they do understand what it takes to run a library behind the scenes and how patrons use a library in front of the scenes, as it were. Their understanding of the role of the park in the town, their opinions about how the memorials could be made into a less arbitrary seeming, more reverent sort of situation, and at the same time make the park more usable. I know, I walk by there frequently, and very few people actually use the park. There are no paths, the benches are simply around the edges, and I've always thought that it doesn't really function like a park, it just functions like a raw green space. And I think that they're interested. They're library consultants, their knowledge of libraries is strong, their landscape architecture firm is strong, their ability to talk to them is good, and so they seem to be people that we could have an equal partnership with. That is, they would listen, but at the same time, they would know when to back their knowledge over our knowledge. So, concisely, if that's concisely, that's it.
Can I do a super quick follow-up? Two things, one a comment and then a question. The comment was about the memorials, specifically the monuments, and I wasn't a big fan about moving them at all, but just briefly glossing over, it seemed like they did, like you said, added an additional kind of reverence to them, which was nice to see.
It took me years to realize there were three.
Yep.
And so, a number of the firms said, "They just look like they've been dropped, and so let's organize them in some way where they can relate to one another and they can let people vibrate off of one another."
And then the question was, and I think it's really important, and I'm sure they gave you a satisfactory answer, as far as public engagement and having and soliciting public input, did they have a similar structure to what the...I watched one of them, and the structure was kind of, "We propose an idea, we go through the town, people provide input, we take that input, we reorganize what we did, we then again present it to the public, again solicit input." So what is their kind of public input plan?
Theirs would be roughly the same.
Okay.
They're very much engaged with the public, they provide materials for groups to raise funds with, they understand the stop and start of dealing with nonprofits while money gets raised, they're not adverse to that. They're very conscious that these are central community buildings that need to be paid attention to. I foresee no problem with that. Everybody that we talked to, as their references said, they were very engaged in that process, as we will be. We are bound and determined to be extremely transparent and extremely in-your-face about what we're doing and asking a commentary. Now, that said, we are under the restrictions that we are looking at what the Library Committee came up with as a space needs, program needs document, but how it happens, what the flow is, what's emphasized, what things might change here and there, it's all yet to be determined. We have not bought a building. We are hiring a firm, and whatever you saw in the presentations for building, you know, it's just one possibility among many possibilities. Yeah.
Great.
Nobody will be left out.
Thank you.
Yeah, before I move over to you, I'm going to move over to you. I should have said this earlier, I really have been impressed by the process that the planning committee has gone through and the dedication.
Me too.
That they have had to...they meet a whole lot more than we do, and they aren't getting the big box.
No, no, no.
And I don't mean that sarcastically, but, I mean, you're really, the work that they have put in has been exemplary, and we really owe them a true, deep heartfelt thank you for what they have done.
I will pass it along, I agree with you totally.
And I know they went through a lot of deep concentration and thought on coming up with this proposal, I really want to thank.
And more, and more to come. We feel that we've turned a corner, but we're not done. But it is time for the Select Board and the Library Committee, I think, this is a personal We've done the big piece of what you've asked us to do, assuming that you agree with our recommendation, but this is not a time to lay fallow, it's a time to keep on, and the question is, who should keep on, and what should they keep on keeping on?
I agree with you, yes. So, okay, I'm going to go first to Ken and then to Jeff.
For a second, the thoughts of the Chair on thanking the committee for all their hard work. Like Owen, I just haven't had a chance to view most of the presentations yet, but I'm going to.
Okay.
The reports that I've heard from people who've been there have said how good the process was and that the presentations were extremely useful. Happy to hear that the recommendation was, as you say, while not unanimous, nearly a consensus and one that everyone can live with. One question about, you mentioned that they had built libraries in over 30 communities in Maine.
Yes.
How do those communities stack up in size relative to Rockport?
It's a whole variety. It's a whole range from much larger to much, well, not much smaller, but smaller or our size libraries. But they struck us both in their materials and in the conversation as certainly not a pre-programmed, "Here's what you need, we'll just blow it up or shrink it down." But rather that different communities have different needs and wants, they have other different kinds of other facilities, some communities have community centers, some don't. We have an opera house, which means a different set of criteria for what we're going to put into the library. Our grounds are different than a ground field or clean field site or a restoration of an existing building. So I think that they are flexible, they're knowledgeable, but also, but they're not wedded into a systematic way of, "Here it is, here it is, here it is."
Can I follow up on that just a little bit? Just, I don't know if you remember, when we were selecting the firm to do the construction, the construction analysis on the building? I interviewed them for that process, and they were, they blew me away when I did the interview, and there was a team of us that interviewed them. And I, we did not select them, and I don't remember if you remember, I don't know if you remember this, but I did not select them because I thought that they would be a finalist. They had a lot of the characteristics we needed for an architect, for us to build a library, the sensitivity to the surrounding, you know, the surrounding environment, the use of existing, the use of an existing building if it's needed. There was a lot of things that they were saying about how they work within the community that I thought, "That's going to be really important to us going forward." So we used CES, who isn't an architectural firm, they just do structural and environmental engineering stuff, with the hope that when we would get to the point we are at now and that they would be a finalist. Because there is, there's a few, you know, there's Reed &amp; Company and, who did the other study? Scott Simons?
Scott Simons.
Oh, the earlier one, yes.
Yeah, they do most of the libraries in the state. And so they, you know, they did not disappoint me at all. I felt that they went above and beyond what my expectations were of them.
Okay. Jeff?
Pursuant to Owen's question about community involvement and what have you, the committee, and tell me if I'm wrong here, but there was some shorthand at the presentations that was indicative of longer conversations in the RFQ, I presume, but that Reed had heralded and brought a community, brought Cape Elizabeth through some very difficult transitions of whatever nature, but they had apparently voted down a library once or more times, and that Reed was able in the end to marshal their forces, have the wisdom and the guidance to allow Cape Elizabeth to come to a decision and then go ahead and build a library.
That is true.
So, that seemed to, in my notes, in terms of what people were responding to in the decision-making meeting, and I was sitting back and back helping, hindering the video guys, but for all the other meetings, that played well to the committee, the ability and the history to be able to point to it in...
Because we've only voted it down once.
There you go.
So it should be smooth sailing from here on out.
I think that the, all six firms, regardless of what they showed for drawings, showed a considerable amount of awareness of the physical situation of the library versus the park and the history, and that we will be able to ameliorate the worries of a lot of people who had been very concerned about what might happen. You know, if you don't know anything, then there's ghosts in the closet. And so I've talked to several people since the presentations, since the decisions, who have said, "Good, it looks like things will be good," and that the town can unify behind whatever it is that they come up with, that the big issues are not going to remain big issues for very long. And that's good. Now, are there fights to come? Absolutely. Is there a clock tower or no clock tower, or a couple or no couple, sure. But we'll weather those much easier than what's been threatened in the past in terms of unhappiness in the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to sort of chime in on what Jeff just said, that, and there's nothing really to do with the process you went through, but it was so helpful to have it livestreamed, be able to go back and watch, and then, "Oh, wait, what did that one say?" And then go and try to find the location and the other.
And I think all of us on the committee did that.
It was so helpful, and I got to congratulate Jeff for all the work that he's done on bringing us into the 22nd century compared to what a lot of things have been in the past, but yeah.
The view count, last time I checked at the summary meeting, was, depending on the architect, between 75 and 200.
Whoa.
That's considerable.
Oh, this is going back and looking at it after it had been livestreamed, after the presentation was over?
Well, that would include, that would include the people that, I'm not exactly sure how the, I forget the technical term for that. But anyway, but I would presume that that would include the people. There were quite a few people. Brian, do you remember how many people were watching it actually simultaneous to its actual thing? There were people that were coming out for that.
I remember about 24 or 25.
Yeah, teams, teams that were actually watching.
So we had a constant audience for those two days, 20-plus additional people right as it was going on, and then over the course of time, up to 200 for the...
And I think those have not lost their value.
Oh, no, they're out there, and, you know, I know this is kind of a distraction from what it is, but it is, it has been very helpful that, personally, I didn't have to come and sit here and then rely on my memory for what somebody else had said.
Exactly.
I've got a record now, and I'm streaking strictly personal on this, but this is really great. And I saw the process that you folks were going through when they were doing, each one of them was doing that presentation, and I know it was, I wouldn't want to be standing up there and answering some of those questions.
For me, it was valuable because knowing it was going to be available for me, I didn't have to take as detailed a notes, which meant I was able to give my full attention to actually what I was seeing and hearing. And I did go back and watched a couple of them to refresh my memory from the materials that they dropped off to everything else. It's been a lot through our heads over the last month or so.
We had at least one, at least one person I know of watched from Florida.
Okay.
So, and I'm guessing there may have been others.
Does anyone else have immediate questions of Jan? Because this is a meeting, and I was going to ask if anyone in the audience had anything that they wish to say, add, discuss, or propose at this point. Any objection to that? No? Does anyone wish to add any comments?
Which is really important.
Ms. Charbonneau? If you would, please, you know. This is the new technology, and they need to be able to see you at home, so.
Okay. I just want to add my voice of appreciation and gratitude for the work that the committee did. There's no doubt a lot went into it. But I also feel very encouraged and heartened. I think we're on the verge of really turning a corner here in this whole process, and we have really an opportunity to bring a lot of people around that corner and down a new road. I'm sure there'll be, as the architectural firm gets more feedback, there'll be different opinions and maybe some disagreements, but what's encouraging to me is that this firm will not be taking an adversarial stance towards the town, that they will be trying to integrate and accommodate the underlying interests that people will be bringing to that conversation. So I am hopeful, and I really think that, you know, we're on our way. I mean, again, there may still be a few difficult conversations, but we're on our way. And so I just want to say that I find that very heartening and encouraging, and thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Really appreciate that. Does anyone else wish to say anything? No? Oh. Ms. Cook?
Yeah, Sally Cook, I live in the Village. I learned incredible amounts from watching the presentations, and that was helpful. And the process that the committee went through in choosing an architect, I could see was difficult for all of them, I mean, between the two. But it was fair, and I'm full of appreciation for how they did it, especially to you, Tracy. You put in a huge amount of work and trouble to change your mind about the site, and I really appreciated that and respected it, and thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sally. Does anyone else wish to say anything? So, with that...
Can I say one thing? That's on a different subject?
You can say as much as you want.
No, you don't want to hear me, I said everything I had to say Wednesday. I want to echo one thing that Jan said about John Schultz. He was of immense help to us, gave us a huge amount of his time, not just the meetings we went to, but I ran him to the grocery store this weekend after I had gone to four libraries, including his library, and we spent too much time at the library, my husband actually left and took the ice cream home and came back to get me, because John and I were talking in the foyer of Hannaford. But he has given of his time freely, he has given us so much professional information, he has not attempted to sway us, he has really worked to help us have the terminology we needed to be able to talk to people, some of the things that we should be on the lookout for. And one of the things he said to us after hearing all of these presentations was, you know, "Don't fear a three-story library," because, you know, that was something we'd talked about before. And he had built a three-story library, which is Belfast.
Oh, yeah.
And so that's one of the reasons why I talked to him over the weekend, is I actually went up there, saw the library, drew some conclusions, and then was able to talk to him about, and talked to him very frankly about what I liked and what I didn't like and why. But he was, he is invaluable, and if he finds the time to help us through the rest of this process, it is just, his help is immeasurable. It makes the process that much better, it informs any group that is working with him, and will also honestly help any architect, help Reed &amp; Company that much more, because the committee has the terminology that can help move us through this. So I really think that the town needs to do something very, very clear to thank him for the time he's already put in, in hopes that perhaps he'll continue to help us out, because it's just, it makes a huge difference to have that kind of knowledge that none of us on this committee had.
You'll get something too. You'll get something too.
No, no, no. I just want to say, I'm going down this week to meet with Reed, so we get a first-name basis and I can meet the other people. And I said to John, "I'm going to go down to Reed, do you want to come with? What have you got for time next week?" And he immediately emailed back, "Well, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Friday are just fine, I'll even drive." So John has not stopped, and I don't foresee him ever stopping to be available to us. Maybe not quite as intensely, but...
But we are just so lucky to have him.
Very valuable resource.
Yeah, you're right. You're very right. So, you know, and I would hope that your members, you indicated that many of your members would like to stay on for this next stretch.
I believe so, yeah.
This isn't, this isn't the building part, this is still a planning part. And given all of the stress of all the meetings that they have been through, I could completely understand anyone who would want to step down at this point, but I hope that they don't.
No, I think what we want is clarity about what you and the Library Committee would like for, from us. I don't know who has small children, who has other obligations, who foresaw this as through November, who thought about it as going over two or three years, but I know there are people there who now know an awful lot. There are people there who came in knowing an awful lot, and that they can be very valuable to whatever committee gets established in the future.
I think that the original timeline that we had established still holds, and that we do want to be able to take something to the voters in November, which really puts sort of an August timeframe.
Sure does.
On this, so, you know.
And there's a lot, there is a lot of work to be done between now and then, which we'll need help for, and that committee will need additional help. I mean, I see that committee having, breaking up into some subcommittees where other people potentially can help, step up and help in some other aspects and other areas of, "How do we develop this? How do we move it forward? How do we get people excited about the idea? How do we inform the public about the importance of the actions we are asking them to take in November?" Those are important steps to making sure that, because we have one shot at this, I believe, and we need to get this done, and it's a big, it's a big job. I mean, something like this usually takes a couple of years. We're trying to do it in a year. But we do have momentum on our side now, finally. It seems like the tide has shifted, and we have momentum on our side. Let's take advantage of it and get this done.
Okay. Yeah.
I would comment, again, I hope the members of the committee would like to stay on. We are at a turning point, I guess.
I think everybody, everybody has bought in until November, there's no doubt about that.
I would suggest to this board that, to keep in mind that we did have a resignation in the committee early in the process, and that if anybody listening out there would want to join the process at this point, that we could perhaps entertain appointing one or perhaps more additional members to the committee. This would be a good time for somebody to jump in at this juncture.
I wouldn't mind seeing an additional person for the Library Committee, I wouldn't mind seeing an additional person from the community, all well and good, yeah.
But that would allow, then, if we get to November and some members want to step away, perhaps somebody who comes in now might stay beyond November or something like that. So I would just offer that as a positivity.
Jeff?
To build on what you're saying, perhaps this board and/or that board might identify an area of strength that you're looking for that perhaps you don't have at this point, and to cultivate someone who could fill in any voids you see.
Yeah, good luck.
Just one final comment, and it's kind of referencing what Rick said about the com- Just one final comment, and it's kind of referencing what Rick said about the, the compress timeframe that you all have been operating in. I, being somewhat new to this type of thing, was a little bit skeptical that you all would actually be able to do what you thought you would be able to do.
Thoroughly.
Thoroughly impressed. I mean, that's impressive that you got to this point. You whittled them down. You all did exactly what you said you were going to on the timeframe that you set forward. And from the little bit that I've gathered about this and the more that I'll read over tonight and tomorrow, it seems like in that teeny amount of time, you all picked a great firm, so.
John's a taskmaster.
Man, props. Congratulations.
Our meetings went two hours. We got tons of work done every time.
At least once a week, right?
No, we did skip a couple of weeks.
Every other week.
Yeah.
At the beginning, once a week, and then it was every other week, two hours, no more.
So, and along that, along those lines, we do need to be very thankful that Jan has not only chaired this committee, but the budget committee. Because I know what the last two weeks have been like. And I know how many hours I've spent in meetings and you're in most of them.
Not having anything to do today until seven o'clock was weird.
I have no meetings next week. I don't know what to do with myself.
Yes.
Go to the spa.
No one's coming. It's dedication.
It is, and this is an incredible group.
And a strong chairman.
Yes.
Because I've, we've all been associated with committees that have strong chairmen and with committees that don't. And the difference in what gets done is amazing. So thank you, Jan, for your work.
Well, and, but I would also add, thank you, Dory.
Yeah.
And Tom.
Yes.
For understanding why you didn't see your spouses.
I have spent more time with Rick and with Jan in the last three weeks than I have with my husband.
And Meg Barkley, throw Meg Barkley in there too.
Oh, yeah.
Well, she's, she's a phenomenal professional in her own right.
Well, she is, yeah. And if, you know, if John was sick, I would have no hesitation to, to take Meg anywhere, anytime, so.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we engage Reed and Company, architects of Portland, to move forward with the design of a new library for Rockport.
Second.
Moved and seconded. At this point, we have discussion.
You should, you should add to, to instruct the manager to negotiate an agreement with them.
I can do, you can do that, that's fine. I figured the word engage sort of encompassed all that.
I do wanna make a comment. I did go and visit two of Reed's libraries this weekend. I went to four total. But I went to Gray, which he did the last renovation addition. There've been a couple, that's why Gray appears in two sets of RFQs. And I also went down to the New Cape Elizabeth Library Saturday afternoon and happened to, happened to run into Dick Reed, who was down there showing the building off to out-of-town company. And we didn't recognize each other. And then he came back by and he said, "You're from Rockport." And I said, "You're the architect." So I did get a chance to talk to him. And I, I can honestly say that did cement my feeling about the, the company. I really felt like in the, you know, I spent maybe five minutes with him walking around and talking about some things going on at, in the, at Thomas Memorial. And I really felt like he was someone who could take our idea, tell us why it would work or wouldn't work, and would be good at guiding us through that process of saying, "Maybe this is the best way to do it. Here's ways I've done it in the past and how they might work for you." I really felt that he was a very collaborative person. And that's a good feeling when you're thinking about working with somebody for a number of years over something where, you know, "We're gonna talk about light fixtures. We are gonna talk about where to put walls. What, you know, what the bathrooms are gonna look like. There's gonna be a lot of decisions to make." And I really felt like he would be a good person to work with. And that was really, that was really helpful in cementing it. Because, you know, when somebody presents to you, you get an hour of their time. Meh. You know, anybody can be a great performer for an hour of time. So I was, I was impressed. And like I said, that really cemented the feelings I already had about what we'd seen. So I feel, I'm excited you're gonna go down there and, and start to get to know him and his team. I think it's an exciting thing.
I just had one final thing, and I don't know who to direct this question to, but a lot of us come across citizens in our everyday lives and I'm looking at their project schedule. I'm assuming we're all gonna approve that Rick can engage in these contract negotiations, et cetera, et cetera. Can someone just paint a picture for me as far as what will be happening between now and generally speaking, the August first date for final concept schematic design and cost estimate? Just so if someone stops me and they say, "What's the latest on the library?", what can I say?
Okay. The, what, what we have so far are the deadlines that the select board came up with. And that is, if I remember right, July first for a, a reasonably firm concept and cost estimate. And then August first or middle of August for a firmer design concept and building cost estimates. My purpose in going down this week to meet with them is to find out what, what do we need to do and how long do they think it will take? What's our engagement? How often are they gonna come up? How often are we gonna go there? How's that gonna work? And so at the end of my meeting, I hope to be able to give the select board and the library committee a, a more accurate set of mini-goals or goals for between now and the warrant. Not the construction documents or the checkoff list or punch lists or anything like that, but what's happening between today and, and November.
Thank you.
Because I'm curious.
Questions or comments at this end before we go to a vote? All right, we have the motion on with the amendment to have the town manager to, oh, do we have somebody else who wants to comment?
No, it's fine.
Oh, okay.
She's trying to get out of here.
Linda, did you get the part about Rick allowing Rick to go?
The second approves the amendment.
Okay. So we have the motion to approve the recommendation and to have the town manager engage in negotiations on the price and whatnot. So with that said, all in favor? It is unanimous vote.
Thank you all.
And thank you too.
Thank you, Jan.
This is our Jeb Bush moment.
Before we adjourn, it wasn't, it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to point out that I've been doing some analysis of our April meeting and come to the conclusion that if we don't split it into two sessions, we're gonna be here until at least midnight this month, set a record. And I don't wanna try to challenge that in any way. And I would, you know, I, I propose to everybody that we postpone the public hearing and our final votes on the, on the budget and all the warrant articles until the Tuesday following our meeting, which would be April 19th. And I realize that this changes the schedule for the budget committee because they were expecting to meet on the 12th, the Tuesday before, after we would meet. And we're gonna have to push, you know, push them back on that. I have spoken to some people in the town office and the final ballot doesn't have to be sent to the printer until, I think it's the 29th of April. So, you know, we're not running up or exceeding a deadline on anything at this point.
I just wanna remind people that that's spring break.
Yes, that is during spring break. I know, unfortunately.
Not be in Cancun.
Nor will I be.
What about Fort Lauderdale?
Nope, probably my lady.
Can I ask, can I ask the chair why he didn't consider, or, or, I'm sure you did consider, but, but you came to the conclusion that you didn't wanna flip the two functions and do the budget first and then the ordinary stuff two weeks after?
Because we've already scheduled for some people to come in. Midco School Technology's gonna be here. We've asked the Parks Department to come in here. Fox on the Run has come, is asked to come in and renew their permit to use there. And there are several other items that we've already had on there. And I would rather not disrupt our normal meeting schedule. But this is something we should keep in, in mind because I'm thinking we're, with all the work we're doing, we're gonna probably need to go back to the two meetings a month. And, you know, we've been, one meeting a month, well, quote, one. I'll put the big, huge quote on one.
Twenty-two and a half hours last week.
And we, and I, I personally thank you for that. I really do.
You really probably should thank my husband because he hasn't had a meal in ages. He just gave up cooking for him. My child has just been making sandwiches.
But, yeah, I think we really need to consider, it's been like 10 years.
So moved.
Since the Rockport.
I think that's a good thing.
I am a fan. Has had two, you know, scheduled two meetings and.
That's well.
So, okay. But I, I wanted to bring that up and make that noticed for sure. So, you know, it doesn't require a vote because I get to make the decisions on when we meet.
Yeah, I've already said I'd have two shorter meetings than one longer.
The 19th.
The next week.
The Tuesday of the next week. The 18th is a holiday, that's Patriots' Day, so we're meeting the next day. We'll be ahead of that.
You'll just have to check and see if you've got anybody that's gonna be gone for spring break.
Yeah, I.
I don't know if anybody on your, on the budget committee is, but.
Yeah. I know somebody's not gonna be in town, but she's not going on spring break. Well, she is, but I wouldn't consider St. Lawrence County, New York as spring break.
Whatever Fletcher bought.
Yeah, so I just wanted, I, I wanted to put that out there, so.
What else we need to do?
Do we?
I wanna make a quick comment about the road acceptance ordinance issue. This, this board referred it to the ordinance review committee at our last meeting. The ordinance review committee spent a lot of time last week looking into it and made a recommendation. Their hope was to have that on the ballot in June. And I just, I'd like to see if there's some way that we can make that happen. I've seen some people who've said.
By including it in the next meeting?
Well, we have to, we would have to have a public hearing on it. It would have to be a public hearing with the other warrant articles.
And it would have to go through the planning board as well.
Correct. And I think in order to have a public hearing, we probably would have to vote tonight to do that, I think, for timing-wise or, or sometime very soon in order to get it on a public hearing.
Actually, I don't think it can hit the planning board. The planning board's already had their, their, I think their public hearing has already been put in the paper.
Yes.
So they, we can't add anything to theirs. So I don't know if there's enough time to get it in. I don't know when that would be.
Here's my two cents. All I can think about is that nice gentleman talking about his daughter having to trudge through the snow to the school stop. So whatever it is that I need to do to help facilitate this process, I'll be there. Count me in, please.
If we get the amendment, if the amendment goes on and, and the ordinance review committee, so everybody knows, did opt, opt to go for the grandfathering route rather than the change of the thing. They wanna still look at the change of the thing, but they wanna have more time to look at it. So that's what they are, that's what they have recommended. And the issue is that in order to get it, that we'd have to vote on that in June and then the road would have to come up again for acceptance, it would have to be voted by the town in November. So if we don't put the ordinance change on in June, then it would have to go in November and then the road gets approved next June. So it does delay everything by about six months for those who live in that area.
Mr. Chairman, if you were to look towards the audience and ask if there are any questions, there might be a question.
Are there any questions? About what?
About putting it on this.
Oh.
Is this on your agenda tonight?
No, it's not.
Thanks, Jan.
It is not on our agenda tonight. This is just a general discussion. We will not be taking any votes on this because it hasn't been published as an item. Yes. Typical rules is, yes, we could discuss and vote on anything because this is a meeting. But our policy has been that we do not vote, we do not vote on things that aren't on our agenda. We can take them into consideration. But now, I wanna say that when we discussed and voted on this at our last meeting, it was my impression that we were asking the ordinance review committee to add it to their over-the-summer process, not to discuss it immediately.
We lit a firecracker.
And I'm happy to.
I think the motion was, the motion was with all due haste or something like that. I think you made the motion.
I don't think the issue is whether or not we can hear it. I think it's whether or not we can get it on the planning board's agenda in any sort of a timely manner. I'm not seeing that because I think the planning board public hearing announcement has already been published or is ready to be published.
We had to take the vote at our meet, at our meeting so that, that notice could be published on Tuesday morning because that was the only way we were gonna get it into the newspapers for general publication prior to this.
Is there a different requirement? Because this is not a land use ordinance. Is there a different requirement for other ordinance? I don't know. These deadlines, as I say, make my head swim.
That is a land use ordinance. I mean, that's where it goes, is into land use.
But it's not part of the land use ordinance. The road acceptance ordinance is separate.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think it was the select board that, and I wasn't on the select board at the time, that I think it was the select board that drafted and approved and put it on the warrant at the 2007 for vote. But I wasn't on the select board at the time and, to be honest, I haven't gone back and looked at how that ordinance came about.
LiveStream.com, Rockport, Maine, in the past. No, no, that won't work.
I, I, I am unfamiliar with the deadlines.
Yeah.
All the different deadlines, like I say, they make my head swim.
Yeah, was there, what, a couple of questions I have. Was there a quorum at the meeting, at the ORC meeting?
Oh, yes.
There was a quorum, okay.
And it was a unanimous vote. After a fairly significant discussion, it was a long discussion.
We're over that hurdle. But the, you know, the timing of it and, you know, my, my gut is that it, whether it's a land use ordinance or non-land use ordinance, may be a subtle difference, but it still needs to be on the hearing schedule. You know, it still needs a public hearing, it's an ordinance.
Right, my question is the timing of the public hearing. I think if I'm, I, I, again, I profess ignorance.
We could curtail this pretty quickly if indeed, so if this question that we're asking right now was on the docket for the next normal meeting, which is.
April 11th.
April 11th.
It's all whether or not you do planning board.
Well, we can ask the planning board to have two, two hearings. That's not.
If there's time.
It's the timing.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking. So, well, Mr. Chairman, I would say let us, let us, A, do our, our research on the head-swimming timing things. And then if there is that possibility, then we'll have it, put it on the agenda for the April 11th meeting. And we will have between now and then to warn the, the planning board that we'll be asking them to have a, a second public hearing and proceed with this since we did ask the ORC to light a fire under it and it would be kinda silly for us to, if it were possible, with the statutory timings to, it would be silly not to honor their work.
Similar props to the ORC for taking it up so quickly, having a robust debate and coming to a consensus of sorts. That's great.
There, what's the notice requirement for the select board to hold a public hearing?
It's the same as for the, it's any, any public hearing.
It has to go to the planning board before it comes to us. Because they have to have the opportunity to update it or change it as they see fit.
Right, right.
Before it comes to us.
I just wondered if we could notice the public hearing April 11th and then hold the public hearing on the 19th? If there's enough time and there are not.
Well, see, they would have to have their take at it.
Yeah. And it ta, and it has to be put in the paper like seven days before or something.
Well, it has to appear seven days before, which, because it's published on Wednesdays, that's another week.
That's another point that's been brought up to me on a few different occasions is that the legal requirement is that it be published in a newspaper of general circulation. The Bangor Daily is a newspaper of general circulation in the area. And that, that would suffice, which gets us out of that, that trap of, of the only local, quote, local paper being a weekly paper. And we can provide plenty of notice online and things like that, so.
Start going to print.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to look into this.
I think there are other issues with that too.
Yes. Yeah, we'll, we'll have to deal, delve into this. And we can report back at our April 11th meeting. We don't have anything scheduled for a select board meeting before then.
Brighter minds than mine.
Well, not select board meeting, but April the 4th is Midco Solid Waste.
Yes, but that is a, a meeting of Midco Solid Waste to which all the select boards of the four towns have been invited. It's not our meeting.
Right.
So.
Well, let's get it on the agenda on the 11th and see what we can do. I just wanted to bring it up because the ORC did work hard on it.
And thank you for doing that, Ken.
It deserves to be heard.
Okay. Then I would, do we have anything else? Do we wanna just toss around here?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I, nobody wanted to stick around on this one.
I sent Rick something today.
Only 15 hours this week.
And I don't know if he's gonna forward it to you all.